Welcome to the work session for Monday, December 7th, 2020. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States.
Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands.
Which it stands.
One nation.
One nation, under God, indivisible.
Divisible.
With liberty and justice for all.
For all.
Okay, Lee, please take roll call.
Councilwoman Scritti.
President.
Councilwoman Resnetti.
Present.
Councilwoman Riley.
Present.
Councilwoman Friedman.
Present.
Councilwoman Burns.
Present.
Councilwoman Strong.
Present.
President Scanlon.
Present.
That's all seven here.
All right, Mr. Wagner, are you out there?
Yes, I am.
All right, the reason I invited you down here, just give us a, if we don't have a ton of time here, give us a brief description of how the tradition has been going at the plant from Jacobs Manufacturing to your plant, please.
Well, basically, as of right now, the plant is operating with all three pieces of equipment and process.
Are you sorry that I got this in some way? There's a horrible echo. We can't understand anything.
Mr. Wagner.
Oh, this is Councilwoman Friedman. There's a terrible echo. I couldn't understand anything that was being said.
We're all, we're all the same way, Councilwoman Friedman. Mr. Wagner, can you try it again, please?
Sure.
Yeah, that's better now. I don't hear.
Okay, so as of right now, the, the plant staff is operating about 100% of the processes at the facility. Jacobs is, they have a presence here a couple of times a week. At this point, we are working hand in hand with each of the vendors on the processes that are needing just minor tweaks, startup issues, as you would have. The big part of that, those processes are the ActiveFlow and the CN and DN facility. We work with Kruger daily. We're in constant contact with them. So we're doing the, the manual labor and suggesting process changes when we feel they're needed. We won't do anything, though, unless Kruger is 100% on board. So the UV system, we've got that working in auto now, which is a great thing. But again, we still work hand in hand with that vendor because we have one minor issue. We're working through that. The digesters, that was not part of the big project, but still some equipment was replaced, covers were installed. We've just had a vendor from, I believe it was Utah, come out called West Tech, and they have successfully repaired some equipment that was installed that was damaged during installation. So basically, we're doing the lion's share of the final startup, if you will. As far as we're concerned, Jacobs is handling paperwork, backend type stuff. I think Frank from Jacobs does do some inspection of some of the PC work that's being accomplished right now. At the moment, they're draining each of our tanks down a bit so they can lower the weirs. Then the last item seems to be SCADA. We're about 95% complete there. We work with GHD when they are available. Basically, we're waiting on the historian and then just some minor vendor HMI to SCADA, HMI inconsistencies. But other than that, we're pretty proud of the numbers that we're able to produce with the system as it is. I think the systems, when they're 100% online, will show that you, you have a nice facility here and able to meet our total nitrogen, phosphorus, ammonia, nitrate, nitrite, CBOD, and TSS limits. In fact, since April, when we were required to do so, we have met every limit. Other than that.
Okay, Mr. Wagner.
Can I ask any questions?
Yeah, let me start the questions out, please, if I could. When you were in front of the city council last year, you talked about a preventative maintenance system you were going to purchase to help with the, you know, the maintenance, obviously. Have you purchased that system?
That system is up and running, has been for about five years.
Oh, I thought you were talking about a new one. Well, matter of fact, you were talking about a new one you were down before, a new preventative maintenance system that was going to help you with the new plant.
I don't recall saying anything.
All right, that was my understanding. It was a new system we were talking about. So is this sitting out, Mr. Elliott, do you feel you have enough, or Mr. Wagner, I apologize, you feel you have enough operators, plant personnel, mechanics, and engineers to operate the plant properly?
As far as mechanics and engineers, yeah, it'd be nice to have one more mechanic, one or two mechanics. We're, we just brought over a trainee mechanic and we plan on hiring a mechanic and a mechanic's assistant first of the year for the 2021 budget. As far as operations that are concerned, we just hired an operator trainee because one of our existing operators tested and passed his operator two test. So that operator is upwardly mobile and will probably test out in September for his three, which will open up yet another slot for us. Come.
Let me, go ahead.
Come January, I believe we are, have the ability of hiring one more operator trainee, if I'm not mistaken.
Let me back up on the maintenance system, if I could, Mr. Wagner. So basically, how many people can operate this maintenance system that you have in place? How many different people are capable of understanding the system besides you, obviously?
How many mechanics we got down there? Seven now? There's five or six that work it day to day, and it is administered by our facility's engineer who can set up training for any new mechanics that come on. Basically, the lion's share of the, that project has been complete, and when I say that, that is the data entry. There are still some fine tuning things we can continue with in that regard, as, as far as like making out a detailed maintenance for each individual item. So right now, we have a maintenance shell that says, okay, every, every week you have to go out and check the air filters on this Airzen blower. Okay, this is probably $150,000 piece of equipment. This just reminds us to go check that out. The mechanic will then go out into the field, inspect those air cleaners, and at the same time, we'll do a general inspection of the equipment and then close out that work order. So last week, they closed out in the neighborhood of 125 work orders, and that's with two guys out for half of the week on COVID. So once we get past this pandemic, I'm hopeful that we will be able to comfortably maintain all the existing equipment that we have here. We do have quite a few pieces of equipment that require maintenance contracts with their respective vendors. And you will see this coming up in future budgets. I believe you probably saw it in the 2021 budget. Just like our centrifuges, they require a maintenance contract to keep their warranty in place. The same with the Airzen blowers, the flight pumps. If you'll notice, there later in your meeting today, you'll be moving some money around for us, hopefully, so we can purchase a backup DN influence pump. This is something that it's critical. We don't have a spare, and it should have been caught in the design, but it was caught by the plant because of basically this right here. We're, our feet are in the fire, and we want to do a good job for you. We want to protect the citizens of this community. And we feel that we would be remiss if we didn't ask for a spare pump. And yeah, it's going to be expensive, but we do have money in another part of our budget that we can hopefully relocate into a line so we can purchase that.
Mr. President, can I, can I, I have a question, if that's okay? Sorry, that was, so let me resonate. Sorry. Hi, Mr. Wagner. Hi, thank you for being here. I have a question for you. We were just talking about spare parts, and that's kind of triggered this. I was wondering if you can tell us a little bit about that, and I don't know a whole lot about this type of stuff, so I'm hoping you can help me understand a little more about the spare parts that are needed for this project and where you are with that, how are they being tracked? How do you do all that? I mean, I would think keeping track and keeping, you know, inventory up to date, you know, with numbers and, and all that must be a pretty big project. So can you just tell me a little bit about that, please?
So the CMMS software has the ability to track inventory. Inventory tracking is something fairly new for the facility, and we realized that we were going to need to do this for this project as it was required. So basically, as we work on this equipment and get familiar with this equipment, we will put in, oh, here's a spare part that wasn't specked out in the job specs. So the contractor didn't buy this and give it to us for free. So now we need to, once we get all of those ONMs onboard and read them, then we'll know exactly how many spare parts, what type, how much it costs, and then how to track those.
So how, so how are they being tracked currently? I'm sorry. With the software?
We're in the process of inputting all that data in that CMMS program.
CMMS, okay. So there's some sort of a, a report that shows where you're at with that right now. Is there any way we can have that by any chance?
If you'd like to see what the inventory list that we currently have is, yes. As far as, how do you want to see it, I guess would be a better question. Do you want to see the spare parts for each process, each piece of equipment?
Well, I, I guess, because I personally don't understand the CMMS software, I, I guess I would just like to see what is it, what sort of a report can it generate that, you know, gives folks a clear sense of where you are with those parts, those spare parts? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I understand. So every, every Sunday, automatically in my email, that software generates a report for me, and basically that tells me what work orders are going to be due over the next two weeks. And then I get another report that tells me of those from the previous week, how many were closed. So basically, we're tracking the work orders right now. As far as tracking the inventory, that is something that's, it, I haven't generated a report for that. I haven't really felt the need, but if the city council would like to see what the inventory is, I can certainly get that generated for you in a report form.
Yeah, if you could also put, make sure the dollar amounts are on there of these spare parts, please, that would be helpful, too, just so we have an idea of what's out there, then.
So we have approximately 790 spare parts listed, I believe, and when they were turned over, they did not, they weren't turned over with a dollar amount attached to them. The turnover was, here's a pallet of material. This is for this project. No paperwork, nothing. Here, sign this, that you received this. See you later. That's how that was handled. And.
How, how difficult would it be to, to estimate these numbers on, in the case where something was handed over to you, like a pallet of stuff, would it be difficult to track down the value on anything?
Well.
Or that, is that something, is that something that's not really feasible?
Yeah, some, some of the stuff has value to it, but other things like a $2 filter or a 30 cent washer is, is that how deep we want to go with this, or?
I know, I, I'm not interested in that. No, there's, there's no, no. I don't want to create more work than necessary for you. I, I just, I want, we just had, like, to have an idea what kind of, a dollar amount we're looking at for spare parts. If you want to estimate bulk stuff like that, I have no problem doing that. I have no problem seeing a number on that, but you can, you don't want to get down to the washers and nuts and bolts. Doesn't make any sense.
So can I ask a question? This is Councilwoman Riley.
Sure.
Okay, so we have the, the sewage, Mr. Wagner, here for a series of questions. I believe I may have missed something. We know that at the turnover of the management system, even during our visit, we saw of several companies leaving things for the transition out, correct? Right? The extra parts so that management can be managed by, and we talked about that at this time. Some of those additional parts were factored into the budget because we talked about that as well. So what are we talking about today now? Are we saying that something was not included in the transition process and that an exorbitant amount will be expended now to accommodate missing or necessary parts? Is that what we're talking about right now?
Well, I certainly hope not.
No, no, there's no, listen, listen, this is not, this is not a query. This is not, we're just, we're asking questions here. And I, there's, all I'm looking for is a, what spare parts are, are, that we have in inventory, basically. That's what I'm looking for. I'm not looking for, create work for Mr. Wagner to get into nuts and bolts and all that kind of thing. I just wanted a dollar amount of what we have on hand. I just for an idea for myself.
And for me personally, when I asked about the CMM, I'm sorry, Mr. President, I, I'm not, I'm just trying to understand a little more, and I hope it is okay that I have questions regarding this. I appreciate your answers and your time, Mr. Wagner.
No, I think it's great, and I think that level of.
Well, that's good. Thanks.
Is necessary. I just, again, we, I don't think all of us were privy to where we were going with the plant tonight. And so the level, you know, I wanted to be certain we're able to answer our questions outside of those.
Well, I'm, yeah, I'm not sure where we're going anywhere either. It just questions come up as discussion continues. And again, I'd appreciate Mr. Wagner's information. Thank you.
Councilwoman Riley, I'm not sure we're privy to anything here. We're asking questions about the sewage treatment plant, and the dollars spent there are very large, as everybody knows, and we're just trying to make sure that we're asking Mr. Elliott questions or Mr. Wagner questions, just to make sure everything's in line. It's our job as city council, though. We're not doing anything that isn't on call there for.
So that's great. All right, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Wagner, I have an acquaintance who works at, he's an electrician, works at sewage treatment plants up and down the East Coast, and and he's from New York City, the deposit, he's been all over. So I, I asked him, he said, there, there are maintenance systems he's seen, they alert you on a, like, on a daily basis, what needs to be done that day, like an alarm on your system. Is this something that our system has also?
Does he get, like, emails or text messages from his system? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, that's what I'm asking. Same type of thing. Yeah, it's an email or a text, yes. It's an alarm, basically, that what needs to be done that day.
I believe it's possible for that to be set up, but at this time, it is not.
All right. And one more question, and I'll open it up. If anybody else wants to ask a question, certainly welcome. I remember when we were there for a visit, you talked about methanol. Is there a lot, do we keep a lot of methanol in inventory? Is that something we do as inventory items?
We buy methanol by 7,000 gallon tankers, and we typically have anywhere between 1,000 and 20,000 gallons on hand. So it's, we go through approximately 6,000 to 7,000 gallons of methanol in a week.
I don't, I don't know anything about methanol at all, and so how's methanol stored? Is it, it's tanks, obviously, correct?
Yeah, there's two bulk storage tanks with associated safety equipment attached to it. There is a fire suppression system attached to it.
We don't, we don't have any issues with the methanol, do we? I mean, as far as the storage or the tanks or anything, correct?
No, we've been fortunate.
Well, thank God for that. All right, does anybody have any other questions for Mr. Wagner?
Yeah, I do. Scott Burns.
Yes, Scott Burns, yeah.
Yeah, hi, Elliot.
Hi, Mr. Wagner.
I like, like, Councilwoman Riley, I, I wasn't prepared for you to be here tonight. So and I, I don't know anything about methanol or anything that you, you guys are, are talking about at the moment, but you know, it wasn't long ago when you were, you were, you were here and we did the, the budget. So how's it going? Is, are we so far? Do you still think we're going to be, stay on the budget, and do you think that everything's going okay? Anything, any problems?
This year, I think that for 2021, I think that we will be able to maintain that budget, handle it, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thanks for coming in, too.
Any, any other questions?
Yes, this is Councilwoman Friedman.
Yeah, Councilwoman Freeman, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. Hi, Mr. Wagner, how are you?
Hi, I'm, I'm good.
So I, um, I, as, as well, didn't come prepared with any specific questions necessarily, but I, I guess, after listening to this conversation, I'm wondering if you have any, anything that we should maybe look out for coming up on the horizon, any sort of like final, I guess, like concluding thoughts about this discussion? What, what should we be looking out for in terms of our role as city council members, besides little budget transfers and things? Is there any maybe big ticket items or anything that you see somewhere down the horizon?
The only project I know that is still up in the air, and I was understanding that it was in Jacobs Court, was during construction, one of the contractors dug up a area, and that drain is now clogged, and we need that drain to operate the facility. We have a workaround for that, but it requires us to run a six inch pump, which is pretty sizable and not very efficient way of doing it when there's a drain in place. I believe the obstruction is anywhere between seven and 10 feet, and we're still waiting for a decision on how they're planning on handling that.
And do you foresee the, that solution being a, a part replacement, or is it a, like, labor cost? You know, generally speaking, what is the fix for that? What, or what does it require? Again, in general terms.
So that would require hiring somebody like Cobra Line to come in and put some sort of cutter blade in that 12 inch sewer line and remove that obstruction. And the, we got was close to $28,000, I believe.
Okay, so this, that would be $28,000 in, like, labor costs, but not necessarily replacing a, a part? Not like replacing an expensive piece of equipment or something like that?
No.
Okay. All right, thank you for that information.
No problem.
Any other questions for Elliot?
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilwoman Scritti.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wagner, for joining us tonight. I, I want to circle back to two things, one being maintenance and the other one being inventory, so maybe I'll just ask these respectively. So when you were talking about inventory, you were talking about the CMS system, so is my understanding correct that when something comes up that's not inventoried, it gives you the ability to input that item for inventory purposes into the system, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so if that's the case, right, by definition, it sounds like you're saying that the current inventory list you have is not 100% as it relates to the entirety of the plant. So my first question is, in your best estimation, how much of the plant's machinery and equipment are currently inventoried and accounted for? how much of the plant's machinery and equipment are currently inventoried and accounted for?
Wow, so I know most of you have been here and are well aware that there are thousands of pieces of equipment here. And when I tell you that we have an inventory of about 700 pieces, um, 10, 20%? I think we have most of the major components inventoried, but it just depends on how far down the chain you want to go. Do you want to know if we have a spare contactor for every motor that we have in the facility? If you do, we're gonna be working for a while because there's probably 1,500 to 2,000 motors here. And each of those either has a VFD or a motor starter associated with it. Controls, overloads, pilot lamps, you know, and that's just the electrical part of it.
So if I'm understanding you correctly, even if we were to assume for a moment an inventoryable list that does not include expendables, the, the 30 cent washer and the $5 hammer and so on and so forth. You're telling me that your best estimation is 10 to 20%?
If you're talking about the major pieces of equipment, I would say it's probably closer to 75%. But if you want to talk about all of the inventory needed to run a sewage treatment plant, yeah, 10, 20%. Hey, we have every blower inventoried, every pump inventoried, every motor associated with that pump inventoried, every grinder inventoried, every grinder's pump inventoried. Do we have the motor controller in there? Maybe not.
I, 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 I understand, I am, and, and I appreciate that. I understand that on a technicality, that the question really is, you know, how far do we want to go down the rabbit's hole, so to speak, in terms of how technical we want to be? Um, the only thing I would just say is 10 to 20% versus 75%. When you talk about the scalability of that, that's a very large variance with respect to what is potentially expendable or not. So I guess my, my follow-up to that is what system or systems are being put in place to remedy that variance and get that as close to 100% as reasonably possible?
So basically just time. Every day we come across something that isn't in the CMMS, we will put it in there as far as inventory is concerned. And then we have to go back to equipment that was never inventoried and wasn't part of the project, like the digester facility. A lot of that equipment is being reused and it might not be in the CMMS yet because it wasn't given to us as a turnover. This is equipment that already exists at the facility. I mean, if this is a direction that you would like us to pursue, we can certainly do that. But it will take one, at least one of the mechanics away from actually maintaining equipment. Or we would have to hire somebody to input data. And, you know, I know grocery stores, you know, semiconductor manufacturers, they have it all the way down to, uh, you know, a piece of tape.
Right. And I, I think, I, I think I could speak for all of us when I say that, you know, we each recognize that something of this magnitude is a daunting task. Um, you know, and, and I think it's just wanting to get a better idea of where we are at currently and as we move forward. So I appreciate that. Um, if I could really just ask, uh, really quickly a second question. So, um, a number of colleagues mentioned maintenance earlier. So I guess my question is, what is the cycle of time for a maintenance schedule to reach 100% review? So for example, um, you know, the sewage treatment plant, I'm oversimplifying this. The sewage treatment plant has 100 items that need to be maintained. What is the time period for the staff at the treatment plant to have gone through a review of those 100 items one time?
That's an interesting question. I, I can certainly ask Howard if he has the ability, if the CMMS program has the ability to tell us that.
Yeah, could, I, I think that, I think that feeds, I think that feeds a little bit into the question that President Scanlon had asked about, you know, a, a colleague that he has that, that works in the industry as it relates to, um, the type of notifications that the system may be able or may not be able to provide plant staff, you know, with this digester needs to be maintained or, um, you know, this pump needs to be reviewed for maintenance and, and, and so on and so forth. I'm, I'm just wondering what the scalability here is in terms of time, you know? Does that take three months? Does that take six months? Does it take a year?
Seeing that all of the equipment has different life cycles and maintenance cycles, that's a very difficult question for me to answer.
Okay.
But in regards to the person that is the traveling electrician, those type of, uh, work orders are basically what I receive every Sunday. When, when you have a mobile maintenance force, you need to have that ability to notify somebody that there's an alarm or that this piece of equipment needs to be maintained. My phone is basically how I get that report. I have email on my phone. So wherever I am, I can, I know exactly what needs to be maintained. And then if I open the second email, I know exactly what was maintained last week. And again, I believe that was 125 work orders that were closed out last week.
Excellent. Well, thank you, Mr. Wagner, I really appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Elliot, at this point, I appreciate you answering our questions, um. We're gonna move on now, but again, I appreciate you, uh, answering our questions and, uh, we'll move on with the meeting. So let's go to RL 20 dash 227. Uh, Mr. Shager is gonna speak for, uh, this, Mrs. Burdy, please.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Councilman, uh, Scanlon, uh, RL 20, uh, dash 227 is something that we talked about in the budget for 2021 and that is to get a maintenance contract on all the kiosk machines out, uh, on the street. Uh, we started one internally and for the last, I'd say, three months and they've been successful. And this is just to enter into a contract, uh, for next year. And John, you want to add anything to that? Uh, can the council persons hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, John.
Yes, okay. Um, no, I just, it's, uh, for maintenance agreement, we haven't had one play, one in place. Um, and these kiosks are, um, reaching the four to five year aged mark. Um, so I think a maintenance contract at this point in time is more critical than it has been historically.
All right, questions for, uh, Mrs. Burdy, please. All right, John, thank you, Chuck, thank you, John.
Okay, thank you.
RL 20 dash 226. Ms. Brackett, please.
Yes, thanks, President Scanlon. Uh, so this is a resolution amending the agreement the city has with CHAD to fund the grocery store. This is just changing the scope as outlined in the agreement from general buildout to equipment, uh, to better align with HUD's eligible uses. The amount of funding and the funding source, uh, stay the same here.
Questions for Ms. Brackett. Again, I just want to say this is, uh, exciting news for the North Side of Bangor that's been without a grocery store for a long time. So this is, uh, this may be an open next couple, from my understanding, so that's a great thing.
Yes, very good.
I have a question.
Yeah, Councilman Burns.
Yeah, uh, uh, hi Megan, when is it supposed to open, you know?
Yeah, so they're hopeful that it will, uh, they're still hopeful it will open this month. Um, I know that they had hit some, um, COVID related delays with getting, um, certain equipment in. Um, but the last I talked to Dr. Sella Pac, um, which was last week, they were still working their hardest to, to have it open, uh, sometime in December.
Great, thank you.
Other questions for Ms. Brackett? Thank you, Megan.
Thank you.
Other RL 20 dash 241, Mr. Standish.
Yes, good evening. Um, this resolution is to, uh, amend a prior resolution, R 2030, which was in agreement with, uh, supplemental agreement with Barton and Judas to, uh, uh, work on the, uh, improvements to the fire station floor. And so what, what happened with everything that happened this year so far with COVID-19 and stuff? Some things have fallen through the cracks and unfortunately this was one of them. And the budget line had to be changed because that budget line that was in the original uh, resolution has been used up. So we've got another budget line to use to be able to pay them for this work.
Questions on RL 20 dash 241 for Mr. Standish. Okay, Ray on the RL 20 dash 243, please.
Yes, this is a supplemental agreement with Keystone Associates. And regards to the new fire station, if you look in your packet, you'll see that the original, uh, design was $650,000, but then underneath that there were supplemental services that didn't get put in their original, uh, resolution and agreement. And so we need to do a supplemental for just the geotechnical services. And that amounts to a dollar figure of, uh, if you sum those two together, $14,300.
Questions on 20 dash 243? Thank you, Mr. Standish.
You're welcome, good evening.
You too. Okay, Jared Kram, you got RL 20 dash 224 to start out.
Sure, and, uh, President Scanlon, if possible, um, I know we've got, uh, Taylor Botar and a colleague of his from Barton and Judas calling in. Is it possible we could go out of order and do 20 dash 245, uh, so he could present? Okay.
Not a problem.
Taylor, I believe you're, you're on the line. Uh, the floor is yours, uh, to discuss, uh, the SEAKER action. Taylor, are you with us?
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay, sorry about that. Thank you, Jared and, and, uh, city council for having us. Um, this, uh, this relates to the Six Ward Sanitary Sewer Interceptor Project in the environmental review, uh, that we discussed, I believe, back in October. Uh, in October, as the first step of SEAKER, uh, the city council declared lead agency for this project. Um, and just a, a quick recap, if you guys don't recall, the intent here is to relocate the existing sanitary interceptor, uh, outside of the, uh, southern bank of the Susquehanna River, generally between Duke Street and Webster Street, uh, by the water treatment plant. Um, so the proposed project has a, uh, pump station and a realigned force main and gravity interceptor through that corridor. Um, so again, back in October, uh, the city council declared lead agency for the environmental review. This next portion that we have in front of you is parts two and three of the full environmental assessment form. Um, part two, uh, is a list of 10 pages worth of questions, um, where either the, the question is not relevant to the project or our response is a no or small impact may occur or a moderate or large impact may occur, uh, based on this construction. Um, we did not, it was our opinion that none of the, uh, the questions, uh, were considered moderate or large impacts, uh, to the environment. So those that were, were checked for small impacts. Uh, if you go to part three in the supporting information, um, we, we discussed how those impacts would be, uh, mitigated throughout the construction project. Um, so with that, it is the, you know, city's, city councils, um, uh, determination that either it's a negative or positive, um, you know, impact to the environment, I should say, a significant or not, uh, insignificant adverse impact to the environment. Um, should the council determine that, uh, this project, this will not have a significant adverse impact, then a negative declaration would be made. And from that point, uh, that would be posted on to the DEC's environmental news bulletin. Uh, and then the environmental review is complete for this project.
So Taylor, at, at city council's, uh, December business meeting, they will, uh, essentially take an action to, uh, declare, uh, in what fashion? Here's your recommendation. Taylor, and, and your recommendation would be that they, they, they take what action based on what you've, what you've seen?
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear that, that question, Jared. Um, you know, we, 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 we don't recommend, um, whether the, the council should take a, a negative or positive stance. Uh, quite simply, we, we just put together the information, uh, and then allow the council to make that determination.
Counsel, if I may, uh, based on the lack of significant impacts, what they're, the suggestion would be a negative declaration on the SEAKER.
This is Councilman Friedman, may I ask a question?
Sure, go ahead, Councilman.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, so I, um, while I, I, I understand that obviously, um, with reviewing all of these, um, no impact or significant impact determinations, uh, we would then decide which action, um, the city should take. But I'm wondering when, But I'm wondering when, um, when would we have that discussion as a council, tonight, right now? Or would that be at the business meeting? This seems like, do you know what I mean? I guess I'm asking, you know, this seems like, uh, a lot of information to review as a council to come up with a, one simple declaration. I'm wondering if we're expected to do that entirely at the business meeting? Does that make sense? I don't know if my question.
Part of your work session and then make a determination at the business meeting?
I see. So tonight, we are expected to come to reach a conclusion about that? I'm just clarifying logistically how this process works.
Well, whether it's tonight or at your next meeting, uh, Taylor, I'm not sure what your timing is. In order to move forward with the project, you have to seek Seeker.
Yeah, so the, the intent here, the reason we're actually pursuing this, this whole seeker process as a type-one action is to align the project so that it, it could qualify and apply for future grant funds. Um, this portion, the seeker review, has to be completed before we could apply for any future grants. Um, I do not know when those grants could be advertised. Um, so it's, you know, really, the sooner the better. But, you know, if the council was not comfortable with moving forward, uh, with this, this month, and it had to get pushed off, uh, you know, I don't have a hard and fast deadline.
But it's not being expedited?
I'm sorry, Jared?
It's a, it's not being expedited to the Wednesday meeting, meaning that there'd be, you know, additional time for council to consider, uh, the information?
Well, let's, um, let's not, let's not be the reason, or, let's not be the reason for this project to be delayed. So if you want to discuss it now, Councilman, or Councilwoman, uh, Friedman, we certainly can discuss it.
I, I have a question.
Sure.
Uh, Ken, why do you say we should do a negative?
Based on the answer that Taylor was giving you, how they mark things to have a, a small to moderate impact, in the absence of a large impact, that would normally result in a negative declaration under Seeker. Right? Seeker is intended to establish if a project will have a significant impact on the environment. And what our experts are telling us is they've done the review and they don't see a significant. Taylor, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but that's, that's what I'm getting from his description.
Right.
I would agree with Ken.
If you recall from the past meeting, the project itself is actually to correct somewhat of environmental challenge with inflow and outflow in a, in an older sewer line in the Susquehanna River. Right. So will be, all the reports, all the environmental reports, we'll be able to get to see them before we vote, is that?
Let me, let me interject there for a minute. Taylor and Jared, this is a standard infrastructure project, correct?
I would consider it so, yes.
City Council makes seeker declar, uh, declarations on a number of different projects that I believe this council has before. Um, it's important that the reviews are done and we provide any other, uh, individuals or entities that could party to, uh, a development of this kind opportunity to weigh in. Uh, they have not done so. So as Ken was saying, it is standard that unless a environmental issue came about, that it would be a negative declaration.
All right.
If you have a specific question, you would refer that to Taylor, but normally, your consultant wouldn't give you all of the, the underlying information. That's, that's what we're hiring them for.
All right, um, Council, Councilwoman Freeman, anybody else out there? If you have something, at the, at the, uh, business meeting on Wednesday, if you have something that you consider to be, um, detrimental to this project or not, something that's going to impact this project negatively, you're truly welcome to bring it up before we vote on it. Um, it gives you a couple of days to look at to see you might have a question. I'm trusting the expert here, Taylor. Um, we have to trust somebody, and I have no idea, I have no expertise in this area whatsoever. So I'm surely going to trust Taylor to, to do the right thing here, um, as, as a professional. So, um, and we can vote on it, so you can, Wednesday, you can certainly cast your vote. You're welcome to. You're welcome to state your answer before the vote. And I think we'll move on here. Is there any other questions, specifically for Taylor?
Well, uh, we can call Taylor. I mean, this is going to be not this coming Wednesday, right? So we can call him, the interim, to really go over everything. The way that he did say it was that we were going to vote on some environmental project that I really, quite frankly, am not up on. So if it had to do with the river, then I want to make sure that I have absolutely all the information before I'm saying yes or no on something, so.
My intent is to vote on this on Wednesday. That's my intent, Councilman Burns. So whatever you need to do, whatever you need to do the interim, you're certainly welcome to do it if you can hold a Taylor, question something. Um, but we're, my intent is to vote on this on Wednesday.
This coming Wednesday?
Yes, correct.
This is Councilwoman Friedman. I, I thought we just said that this was not expedited.
It's not expedited. You're right. I apologize. Not expedited. You're correct. So we're not, let me, let me backtrack here. We're not going to vote on it Wednesday. We certainly can talk about the next work session, but this is not expedited, so it won't be this meeting coming up here on Wednesday.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Taylor and Jared, we do not need this expedited, do we?
Uh, no.
Okay, all right. So let's, let's move on then. I love the other questions.
Yes, okay. Hi there, Taylor. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, good. So, um, in Section sixteen, it does talk about an impact on human health, where this action will impede because of its location to a school, hospital, licensed daycare center, group home, nursing home, et cetera. Can you describe the impact that you did mark moderate to large impact may occur?
Certainly, and I'm going to bring on Greta Day. She's an environmental scientist with Barton Le Judas, and I think she'll be able to assist you with that question better than myself. Greta, are you there?
Sure, can you hear me? Great, thanks for having us on. Um, just to provide some clarification on the small, no to small impact or moderate to large impact, for questions in Part Two. For any question that has a numerical threshold involved, so for the specific question, um, if the project area is located within fifteen hundred feet of a school, hospital, licensed daycare center, group home, um, nursing home, or retirement community, um, then that automatically, um, if, if we meet that threshold, the answer automatically has to be moderate to large. Um, and then in the Part Three Supporting Information, um, let me just pull that up. Um, so it looks like we have a couple of childcare facilities and Ben Franklin Elementary School within fifteen hundred feet of the project area. Um, and this is just, you know, within that distance of the project corridor. We're not proposing any work in the direct vicinity of these locations. Um, and we're not anticipating that the project is going to adversely affect these facilities. Um, but that's just kind of an anomaly in the seeker regulations on how to answer specific questions. So does that clarify?
We always have to remember to unmute. I'm sorry about that. So yes, on ninety-seven, it does go into, however, um, it still talks about the disposal of hazardous, hazardous materials within that area around the school. And so you're saying it's not significant enough? Or you're just addressing it because it is?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the last portion of your question? I didn't quite hear you.
Um, yeah, something, something happened. Um, so you, you, yes, you did qualify the reason why it was deemed. However, now, the details, there are significant, there, there's additional data. For example, it says the gas plant, and when you excavate, it will, um, uh-oh, I lost it. But there's additional detail there that may be deemed problematic, right?
Okay, I see what you're, what you're talking about. So there's a separate question in that section of the form, um, separate from the schools, makers question. So this is talking about, um, registered remediation sites that are potentially within two thousand feet of the project area. Um, so we had two remediation sites that were identified as located within that distance of the project area that are registered on the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation's database. Um, so this is just talking about the current status of the sites, um, what they were used for historically. Um, so the first is the NICEG Binghamton Court Street Manufactured Gas Plant. Um, it's a super fun site. It looks like remediation is currently underway. Um, and the site was used from the late eighteen hundreds through nineteen sixty-nine, um, manufactured gas plant. So of course, we had a lot of hazardous organic compounds that were generated and potentially disposed of on-site. So this site is actually on the opposite side of the river from the project area. Um, and then based on information, public, publicly available information from the DEC's database, um, it was determined that, um, public exposure to contaminants is expected to be low. Um, the main concern there was, was groundwater contamination and public waters available. Um, so the second site is the Allmay Brothers Site is another super fun site, um, where remediation has actually already been completed. So we did talk about, um, the contaminants identified on-site, groundwater contamination, soil contamination, um, et cetera. And remedial activities were complete. There's not anticipated to be any sort of adverse exposure to contaminants related to this site. Um, but the bottom line really to remember is that we're not proposing, as part of this project, any ground destroying work on or in the vicinity of these properties. So, um, that's why we are, um, supporting the fact that, you know, the project's not going to impact, um, sensitive receptors in the project related to soil contamination. I'm sorry, I know that was a lot at once. Does that help clarify the answer?
It does, because you did read on the document, and I was just concerned because it wasn't checked as yet. But you have to check it, yes, and then explain why, yeah. And limits in the exposure or the risk to those populations in that area and rounding the, the heightened, the areas.
Exactly. Yeah, anytime.
This is a question for the scientist. Um, so if you, during your, during your work here as a, as an engineering firm, if you ran across something that was, was, you, in your opinion, as, as a scientist and as a firm, was detrimental to the area, you certainly would disclose that, right? That would be something you would certainly disclose in a report, correct?
Absolutely. If we're aware of it, then it would certainly be documented in the Seek documentation.
So in your, in your professional opinion, there's no significant environmental impact of this project with the move forward, correct?
I would agree with that statement, yes.
All right. Thank you very much. Any other questions? All right, we'll move on from RL twenty-dash-two-four-five. Jared, where do you want to go now? Thank you very much for the, your input, you too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, all.
Let's, we can go to, uh, two-two-four, uh, back to the top of my, uh, my list here. This is, and I want to correct the title. The title is, is incorrect, but the budget line is correct on this. It's a resolution to partner with United Way for marketing of the two-one-one COVID assistance program. Uh, it's an amount not to exceed $16,000. I, I sent a note to, to Lee and Grace to correct that, thirteen, sixteen, as the budget line, uh, says. Uh, this was, uh, through a partnership with the United Way, who manages the Southern Tier two-one-one program. Means you can dial two-one-one from any phone to not only receive information about potential COVID relief funds, but really assistance on a number of different matters as it relates to housing, as it relates to unemployment. Uh, it's truly a one-stop shop for a variety of social services. Uh, what we found is that while the business profit assistance is part of the city's COVID relief efforts, it's getting a lot of money out the door, uh, we want to make sure that the residents, the low-income residents have the same opportunities. So we're partnering with United Way on a marketing proposal to, uh, increase awareness for the two-on-one program that United Way is running, uh, through a combination of, of direct mail, a targeted email, social media advertising, and, uh, audience network display ads through the United Way and Gannett's working relationship, uh, to focus on, uh, average household incomes below $40,000, uh, which would be a target for, uh, these types of programs. And utilize United Way's existing, um, marketing prowess as they do with a number of their, uh, social service programs, uh, to get the word out about two-on-one. So this would be a funding from the COVID admin line in the COVID Relief Care Act to support existing, uh, City of Binghamton COVID relief programs and assist United Way in getting the word out.
This is Councilwoman.
Question on RL twenty, twenty-dash-two-two-four.
This is Councilwoman Riley.
It's Councilwoman Riley.
Yes, hi, Jared. How are you? Um, can we have a better outline of how this money will be allocated? Uh, tip, typically, we, if it's a marketing plan, would know how much is being spent, uh, in what, on what venues and what methods, what mechanisms? Um, I, I know we have a great partnership with United Way, but thirteen thousand is, is, is a lot from a COVID perspect, you know, in terms of funding for COVID marketing. Do you have an outline of how this will be spent in terms of marketing?
Yep, and I will, uh, I will send that along to, uh, to City Council. Uh, essentially, it's, it's broken up into, again, those areas. I can get you exact, uh, numbers as well. Clean, direct mail, uh, targeted email, social media ads, and then what's called audience network displays, which run on all types of websites. I can provide that to council, certainly.
That would be great. Um, and it's a max of, with the initial draft of the budget, what is the proposed initial spend for the first line of marketing?
Is it sixteen, sixteen thousand?
Oh, it's a max of sixteen, but again, first line, you allocated, I think, what, eight thousand? Or is that in what you're sending us?
It, it'll, yeah, what I'm sending you will be, will show, uh, it's a little bit under sixteen thousand worth of, worth of marketing money that will be spent. We, we don't, we're not seeking approval for a marketing plan that has yet to be developed, that type of thing.
Okay, and, and now, of course, I know the United Way is sending out, uh, promotions for Broom and Hall. We, this money will be allocated to targeting, being City of Binghamton residents, of course, right?
Yes, we're possibly, certainly on the, uh, direct mail and any, uh, geo-fencing. They can get pretty good about, uh, making sure that it's City of Binghamton residents only. As, you know, as part of our program, that's the only folks who qualify. There will be certainly overflow, but, uh, it'll target as much as possible.
Okay, um, because we know we have a lot of agencies that have worked with us in terms of spreading our, our messaging, and they reside in Binghamton. Is it possible that there could be some partnership in terms of, um, a joint effort in marketing to the targeted populations whereby some of our agencies and organizations in our... Organizations in our city can use their own database. Their various resources and then reap the benefit of a marketing plan. For funding.
Well, I think that since United Way has existing marketing throughout the two on one program, um. They wanted to go direct to consumer. Uh, I, I agree with that kind of strategy. Um, w- we don't have necessarily funding as of right now allocated that would go to an agency to market to their clients. Uh, instead, we're using United Way, which is an agency to go direct to the, to clients directly to the consumers within the City of Binghamton. I mean, so, but certainly if there are email listeners that, you know, say CAF of Charities has a client database. Sharing with them the two on one program that's available that they can utilize, that is, it would certainly be in, be encouraged.
That concludes my question.
Any other questions? Alright, Jared, if, uh, if you're not speaking, please mute your microphone because there's some background noise there. Jared on the R L twenty dash two two five, please.
Sure, uh, this is an annual, uh, allocation and agreement with Broom County Stop DWI. Which allows the city to seek reimbursement for, um. Stop DWI related overtime costs on the City of Binghamton. We have a number of trained officers. Uh, who are trained in specific, uh, DWI enforcement and do overtime patrols. Um, you know, as holidays that have to do with, uh, stop DWI. So, uh, this is an annual program. This is actually. From last year's, we'll be getting a, a new one in January. It's a reimbursable grant. The Binghamton, like many other municipalities, has seen a drop in DWI enforcement. Due to COVID on premise consumption of alcohol is obviously historic lows and, um, you know, the, the need for DWI patrols. Has been lessened significantly, but, uh, Stop DWI continues to retain these funds and will be available in the future for future programs.
Questions or comments on two, two, five?
Yes, this is Councilwoman Friedman.
Yes, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Hi, Jared.
Hello.
Um, I am. I am wondering why, uh, I'm just a little bit confused as to why this is considered overtime. Patrol and this isn't just worked into the. The typical day to day, uh, operations of the police department.
So, um, any patrol officer will certainly, uh, can certainly make a DWI stop. Uh, they can, uh, arrest an individual who is suspected of driving under the influence. But the special detail is, uh, a police officer who is not responding to calls. But rather, um, uh, patrolling high traffic corridors, uh, to be on the lookout for. Individuals that are driving under the influence or, uh, pulling over vehicles where they have reasonable suspicion. That, uh, they have, uh, committed a crime or something out of the ordinary. So, um, that's what this. Will, uh, will focus on. And from the state's perspective and from the county's perspective. They want the Stop DWI money going specifically to DWI focused patrols.
So to clarify, that, these are officers who are on duty at the time. And they're getting paid their regular salary in addition to this money that's coming from this grant. On top of that as well?
So how, how it would, would work is as follows. So, um, Officer Cram works from, uh, Sunday to Thursday. Five days on the force on the West Side Route two oh nine. And then on Friday night, there's an opportunity to work overtime in a special DWI detail. And I'm doing that because I am a, I have gone to certain classes and am trained to operate, um, uh, breathalyzer. Or, uh, specialize in being able to detect when someone is likely under the influence. Of course, you know, one of the reasons why we have special officers with special training is that eventually the case will have to be prosecuted. And it's very important that the district attorney has, you know, top reports and top trained people are, uh, making arrests for DWIs. So, uh, on Friday night, I will work an overtime shift of strictly DWI. Where I will be located at a certain part of the city or throughout different areas of the city, uh, to, uh, make stops and arrests under DWI.
I see. So this is in addition to the weekly, you know, forty hours or, or whatever it is. So this is man, these shifts would have to be performed, um, in overtime addition, in addition to the regularly scheduled. Police patrol shifts. Am I understanding that correctly?
That's correct. It is a special detail.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Other questions on two, two, five? Jared, tell us about two, three, five, please.
Sure, um, the City of Binghamton was awarded in, uh, late two thousand nineteen. Uh, a grant through the state's, uh, Empire State Development Strategic Planning and Feasibility Studies Program. This is part of the. C F A process, a fifty thousand dollar grant, uh, to fund a stadium district, uh, master plan. And the intent of this was to, uh, focus efforts on planning and, uh, create really an actionable plan. To leverage the public investments in Nice Six Stadium as well as support community revitalization in, you know, what's right now a distressed. Uh, area of the city. Uh, we have the Nice Six Stadium investment. We have the historic announcement that the, uh, baseball team will, will be staying put for. The next generation and, uh, we, we obviously wanted, while we were awarded this funding. At the time, there was some uncertainty about the future of the team. Now that that future is certain. Uh, we want to advance this, accept this grant. The city has a match, uh, forty thousand of, uh, local funding. As well as ten thousand dollars in services to, uh, by, uh, near the, the final quarter of next year. Have an actionable plan to support, uh, new redevelopments, private and public investments. In the stadium district around Henry Street and Stadium. There's a number of historic assets, public assets that are in that area. And a, a neighborhood that, uh, is a shot in the arm.
Again, if you're not speaking, please mute your microphone. A lot of background noise there. Sorry, Jared, go ahead.
That's okay. That was, that was it on this R L.
Questions on two, three, five? Alright, Jared, tell us about two, four, four, please.
Sure.
I'm sorry, two, three, eight, two, three, eight, please.
Uh, this is a, um, this is an agreement to extend the lease between the City of Binghamton. And Southern Tier Zoological Society, which is the Ross Park Zoo, uh, for their use, um, at Ross Park. So this is, um, a, a lease that extends their use of the premises to twenty-five years. Uh, allowing for, um, five year increments where, uh. The Leicester has the right to review and propose amendments to the maintenance agreement and its schedule C in the, uh, the lease agreement. This schedule is essentially the, um, maintenance requirements and funding that the city's providing. Uh, one change to this is that upped the capital dollars invested to, um, ten thousand. So, um, we have that i- in the, uh, agreement. But other than that, everything is fine. Big change here. Is the twenty-five year lease agreement. The reason why that's significant is that the zoo many times, uh, goes after state and federal grants, foundation monies. That they, because they do not have a long term lease, are not able to get those grants because they're not viewed as a, an owner or a long term leaser of the property. This will allow them to do that. And again, like the, the Binghamton Rumble Ponies, you know, announcement. This is solidifying sort of a major cultural institution in the southern tier and giving it a, a solid future for the next twenty-five years. Um, that is the, the big difference this year. We worked with Phil Ginter and members of his board to, uh, work on this lease for some time. Now it's, uh, coming to fruition.
Questions or comments on two, three, eight, please? Alright, Jared, tell us about two, four, four, please.
Sure, uh, this is a resolution authorizing the city to apply for a grant through the New York State Homes and Community Renewal. H T R, uh, for funding under the, uh, New York Community Street Program. Uh, what that is, is one of the few, uh, consolidated funding applications that have been released. We're going to be applying for, uh, up to five thousand dollars in, uh, grant funding to support renovation of the Bosco's apartment facade. This has been brought up in previous grant applications and downtown plans, a way to restore the historic facade of the Bosco's building. To, uh, improve that building and also contribute to the greater revitalization we have in the area of downtown. Certainly with plans to keep Bosco's here in the long term, as well as, uh, the, you know, plans for a dynamic, uh. Rehabilitation of the Water Street ramp, which is, you know, beyond its useful life. So we're trying to go after any grant money at all possible. Um. And, uh, go from there.
Okay, questions on R L twenty dash two, four, four, please? Thank you, Jared.
Alright.
Okay, Chuck, Mr. Shager, tell us about twenty dash two, three, zero.
Okay, President, uh, I have a bunch of them here. I'll go through a year end budget amendments. Uh. I do have, uh, Chief Eggleson and I believe John Panic also on that can help us answer some questions as we go through this. Um, the first one, uh, twenty thirty or two thirty is. We got the final numbers from New York State for the retirement system and we are. Over budget on the E R S system and we are under budget on the police and fire. Uh, retirement system. There are two separate systems within New York State. And I'm looking to transfer fifty-eight thousand, five hundred and thirteen dollars, twenty-one cents from the police and fire retirement budget. To the E R S state retirement budget. I don't know if anyone.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
No questions? Okay, we go to two, twenty-eight. Um. This is a, uh, ordinance asking to amend the twenty twenty fire budget, uh, when they. Are relocating to the location and. I think it's Carroll and Court. Uh, there's, we need fifteen thousand dollars more to finish up the relocation. And we're moving fifteen thousand dollars from the fire and police retirement budget to this relocation expense line. Any questions? Um, I'll take them or to Chief Eggleson who can answer.
Questions on R L twenty-two, two-nine?
Yes, this is Councilwoman Friedman.
Yes, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I'm wondering if you would be able to provide more specifics of what is paid for. Um, or what the funding, uh, what relocation expenses specifically the, is, um. Requires this funding.
Chief, do you want to answer that?
Oh, yeah, that was a payment for Keystone. Um, they had to big, bring the building up to code. Um, the building was vacant for a number of years, uh, and it was a change of occupancy. Um, they had some issues with the bathrooms. Um, the fire alarm system wasn't, there was not a fire alarm system. So they had to design a fire alarm system for the building. Um, they had to separate some, uh, uh, some areas in the building into smaller areas to create, uh, smaller fire zones. Um, there was some exiting issues. Um, that's basically was, was to bring the building up to code.
Okay, great. Thank you for the clarification.
Other questions? Alright, Chuck, move on, please.
Okay, R L two, twenty-nine. Uh, this is an ordinance to amend the twenty twenty fire budget. Um. Keith and I, uh, went through and looked at their overtime. It looks like we're gonna need around eighty thousand dollars. Uh, so I'm requesting to move eighty-two thousand, four hundred and eighty-one dollars from the police and fire over, retirement to the fire overtime. Which is hopeful will take us through the rest of the year.
Questions on two, two? Alright, Chuck, tell us about two, three, one, please.
Okay, R L two, three, one. Uh, earlier this year, um. Talked to you about the increases, uh, in the tipping fees and the landfill fees that. The county increased the landfill fees at the beginning of the year after we did the budget and the. Bert Adams increased, it's not almost doubled, if not more, the recycling cost. Uh. We now have money available in empty vacant positions, uh, throughout the year in the refuse department. So we're asking to move a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, uh, from the personal service lines, which is three maintainer. Positions for the entire year, one street maintainer vacant since September and a motor equipment operator vacant since July. Uh. To cover the tipping fees along with. Uh, moving sixty thousand dollars from the health insurance account to the refuse. Thing. So they're basically short a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars at the. End of this year and that's where the money's coming from to pay for that additional cost. This money is in the twenty twenty-one budget. That's when they don't increase it again.
A question for, Mr. Paddock, are you out there?
Yes, Tommy.
Any, uh, is there any other, there's no other options. Obviously Taylor's gonna hit the same prices, but there's no other option besides Taylor and, uh, Bert Adams, correct?
No, Tommy, we've looked, we've gone as far as Albany and, you know, got together with some, uh, different groups, uh, uh, facility managers and D P W personnel and finance. And they've looked at, they're all in the same boat. So there's, you know, they've kind of got you and, and we have looked at it, but it's right now, Tom, our only thing is where we're going right now. Got no options.
Alright, thank you. Other questions on, uh, two, three, one?
Tom, I did ask for that to be expedited. And.
Okay, that's fine.
I'm short money there and I've been waiting. Since there was a large sum of money, how long it took before I would have money in those lines to, where I can get it from to pay that kind of money out.
Alright, other questions on two, three, one then? Tell us about two, three, two, please.
Two, three, two. This is an ordinance to amend the twenty twenty city hall budget. Um, the. New York State court system came and requested, uh, that we make some modifications, uh, to the fifth floor. Uh, attached is the bill, which is forty-four thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars. Uh. We really need to get that started on this so we can get it done and get it built out before the end of April so we can get reimbursed. Otherwise. We'll be waiting till April of twenty twenty-two to get paid for it. And basically, we're increasing a revenue line that we're gonna get from the New York State system and increasing a expense line to pay for it.
Questions on R L twenty-two, three, two?
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilwoman Schrader.
Thank you. Uh, Chuck, that's a one hundred percent reimbursement, correct?
Correct, one hundred percent, yes.
Thank you, Chuck. Thank you, Mr. President.
Other questions on two, three, two? R L twenty-two, three, three?
Two, three, three is an ordinance to increase, uh. Insurance recoveries in the insurance fund and increase the emergency repairs by ten thousand dollars. For the demolition of twenty-six seminary Ave. Um, I don't know if you want to speak up on this. It's something that we have to have done before the end of the year. And I think we want to probably expedite this one too, although I didn't have it on there.
Jared, Lee, go on and expedite this one also, please. You're, Lee, go on and expedite this one also, please. Lee, go on and expedite this one, please, two, three, three?
Yeah, we can do that.
I'll take, I'll take questions on RL twenty-two, three, three, please. Tell us about two, 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 zero, two, three, four, please.
Okay, back in September, I believe I mentioned this to you earlier, the FEMA stopped funding expenses related to cleaning up buildings due to coronavirus. We're asking for $20,000, which is going to get us some PPE equipment as well as some costs associated with cleaning rooms after a COVID case, and we're asking for $20,000. And we're taking $18,861 that remains in the contingency account and $1,139 that's in the police and fire retirement account to pay for this.
Questions on RL twenty-two, three, four? Tell us about two, three, six, please.
Two, three, six is about the grant that Jared talked about for the stadium district. The first one is we want to increase a grant revenue line by $50,000 and increase a grant stadium district expense line by $50,000. The second part is taking $40,000 of the city share out of the police and fire retirement account of $40,000 and moving that to a capital expense line. There's a series of lines that we have to do to make that happen, but it's on the second page of the RL if you wanted to follow it.
Questions on two, zero, two, three, six? All right, Chuck, tell us about two, zero, two, three, seven, please.
Let me find that one here. Two, three, seven. We are short funds in the sewer funds health insurance account by $42,096.68 and a serial bond account of $16,013. The health insurance is just due to the fact that we were over budget on it. The serial bond interest is due to a bonding, a refunding that we did after the budget last year that affected this. So to cover these two, which is $58,109.68, I'm taking the serial bond principal, $24,013, and band principal, $34,096.68, and moving it to the health insurance and the serial bond interest.
Questions on RL twenty-two, three, seven? Chuck, tell us about twenty-two, three, nine, please.
Two, three, nine. Before I get into the detail on this, this is in my department. Not sure that everyone's aware, but our purchasing agent is retiring at the end of January. In our 2020 budget, we had money set aside to bring in a person to train with him for two months, going through the process in November and December. We ended up promoting a person in my office into that position who was our prior payroll person, who prior to coming here had multiple years of experience in purchasing. I would like to move that person to start training full-time in the purchasing by 12/20, which leaves me a vacancy in the payroll position. I'd like to create an old position that we had here, which is a finance payroll specialist, and promote the person that is currently the payroll assistant into that position effective on 12/12. Also, that has been approved by civil service pending your approval. So basically, what we're asking in this RL is to create and fund a new, new position, a finance payroll specialist, at an annual salary of $41,500, defund a payroll supervisor at an annual salary of $46,710. And I'm saying decrease a 13, 10, 5100 payroll supervisor by $1,796.50. That is from December 12th to the end of the year. Increase the finance payroll specialist by $1,596.15 and put the difference of $200.35 into the contingency account. I don't know if everyone understood what I just said. There's a lot there.
Questions on RL twenty-two, three, nine?
Yes, this is
Oh, go ahead, Councilwoman Riley.
Um, so what, so we're, are we then zeroing out the line for the payroll specialist? Or the, no, I'm sorry, the payroll assistant? The payroll is
The payroll assistant is going to be left open for the rest of the year. We're not going to hire that person. I could guarantee you that because I'm training two people at once right now. But come Jan, I'm going to say the end of January, we're going to hire that person to backfill that position, but not right now.
But that was a funded line on the 2021 budget.
Yes, and, yes, and we will, we will fill that line, Councilwoman Riley.
But the finance payroll specialist was not a funded position in 2021, correct?
Yes, so I will be coming to you, asking you to do the same thing in the 2021 budget at the next meeting. For the, we can't do 2021 changes yet. You'll have to do that at your first meeting in 2021.
So we're increasing your total number of employees by one?
No, you are not. Not, not in 2021.
Not yet.
Huh? I may not have our time hearing you.
Because in 2021, Chuck, the payroll supervisor will still be a vacant position, correct?
No, in 2021, the payroll supervisor is going to be vacant. We're going to remove that.
Yeah.
Just defund that one and put it into the payroll specialist position. Okay, the actual amount of savings in 2021 is going to be about $10,000 from the change from the purchasing at a lower rate as well as from a payroll supervisor to a payroll specialist. So those two will have a savings in 2021 of about $10,000.
Thank you.
Other questions on two, three, nine?
Yes, this is Councilwoman Friedman.
Yes, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was just wondering, this is expedited because it's in two steps. First, we have this, and then we have to amend the 2021 budget before it's 2021. Is that correct?
This is being expedited because I have basically six weeks to get a person trained, and I'd like to have her spend the next six weeks in the purchasing department and having another person do the payroll so I could get it started next Monday, if that makes sense to you.
Yes, thank you.
Other questions on two, three, nine? All right, Chuck, tell us about twenty-two, four, zero, please.
Two, four, zero is another one. It was due to refunding last year after the budget. So I'm asking to take money from the serial bond principal, $11,264.89, and move it to the serial bond interest for the same amount in the water fund.
Questions on twenty dash two, four, zero? All right, thank you, Mr. Shager.
Tom, can I just make one more comment here to everybody?
Sure, sure.
We've been, Ken and I have been working on something about modifying some codes in the charter or code, code changes. We did not get them done for this meeting, okay? We are hopeful that we'll be able to send this all out to you before the end of the week, and you'll have it, and that you can expedite it or have a special meeting between that presentation in two weeks and the end of the year. We'd like to get it, some of it implemented before the end of the year. Some of it has to be. Okay, so whether you want to expedite it or have a special meeting between the next meeting and the end of the year. Ken, you want to add anything there?
Yeah, the idea, there are certain things in the, in the code and the personnel that you need to change pretty much on an annual basis. You need to do an update. We found one or two other things that should be updated as well. So I'll try to get that out to everybody no later than Friday, so that you'll have all next week to ask any questions. When we come back for our meeting on whatever, December 21st, we'll be asking that it be voted on at the December 23rd meeting. So otherwise, you have to have a special meeting before January so that you can make some of these changes. One of them, for example, is setting the insurance rates for non-union employees 2021. That has to be done before 2021, or we can't charge people.
All right, thank you, Chuck. Thank you, Ken. On RL twenty dash two, four, two, the mayor's salary. I'm going to have this one expedited. We can throw out some ideas tonight. You'll have a couple days to decide which way you want to go. We'll vote on it on Wednesday. So I just want to hear your ideas on what they may be for increasing the mayor's salary for the starting year 2022, which will be the next incoming mayor. So if you have an idea of what you're looking for, just please go and speak up. Nobody has any ideas? I'll throw out my idea then. Because again, this doesn't affect the current mayor's salary at all. This is the new, next incoming mayor for the year, January, starts January 1st, 2022. Does not impact this mayor at all. So my idea would be to increase the salary by 1% each year for four consecutive years. So we're starting, again, 2022, a 1% increase for the year. Following January, another 1% increase, and so on down the line. You get to a 4% increase at the end of the term. If anybody has any ideas, please speak up what they, what you're considering.
Um, this is Councilwoman Friedman.
Go, go ahead, Councilwoman.
Sorry, I just have a clarifying question. So it's, it's one, you're suggesting 1% a 1% increase every year of the starting salary? Or 1% and then 1% of that salary and then 1% of that salary cumulatively on 4%?
Yeah, it'd be 1% of, so let's, for instance, we give the, if we agree to this plan, it gives the mayor, we give the mayor 1% increase for the first year of his term, 2022, then it would be 1% of that total increase plus his regular salary. Go move it into the next year. If you follow what I'm saying.
Okay, I think I'm following.
Okay, all right. Anybody, have any other ideas out there?
It's just kind of, Mr. President, this is Councilwoman Resonetti. No, I just wanted to comment that, you know, I'm not really saying much because I am just, it just feels really hard to justify like a higher increase just based on what's going on in our world and the uncertainties with COVID and, and all that. And so, I mean, I, I appreciate your suggestion. I keep it clear that I sold them one way or another, but I appreciate your recommendation.
Any other comments on this?
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilwoman Griggy, please.
Thank you. Yeah, so two things with regard to Councilwoman Friedman's question. I think the question she's asking is if it's 1% a year for four years, is that a 4% raise? Or is it more? And the answer is it's more, right? So
Well, I understand what you, I get what you're saying, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So that, that was the, the second one. I, I personally, I'd be okay with a 0% for year one, because quite frankly, I, I don't, I don't, in my mind, at least right now, corally, two year, a year from now, COVID not being an issue anymore. So I think year one, a 0% raise might be might be, might be the right way to go, and then talk about some number potentially from that point going forward for years two, three, and four respectively.
Ken, at this point, should we do a straw vote on this? I know what we're coming out with. I mean, what's your advice on that?
Yes, I think you want to come out of this meeting with how we're going to fill in those four blanks in the legislation.
Okay, all right, so let's do a straw vote now on who'd be, I guess you got two options out there. So let's, let's start with Jill's, Jill's proposal, 0% increase the first year, 1% the second year, 1% the 30, 1% the fourth year. Let's take a vote on who would have, who would support that? So Councilwoman Griggy, would you support that first one you just put out there?
Definitely the, the, the year one. I mean, if there's, if there's general consent around the, the 1% for years two, three, and four, I'm, I'm willing to engage that, sure.
Okay, so again, we're both, we're voting on this one. We're doing a straw poll, voting 0% increase the first year, 1% second year, 1% 30, and 1% fourth year. So Jill's voting yes on that. Council, Councilwoman Resonetti, what do you, what's your thoughts on that?
My thoughts are to support that, although part of me feels like it should be 1% every year. The reason, and the reason I say that is because it's not a huge increase. In some ways, we are a little bit behind when it comes to salaries for the mayor. At the same time, you know, just taking into consideration what's going on and a whole lot of uncertainties and not going beyond the 1%. So I'm a little, I, I, yes, I would support that, I guess, but I also wanted to say this other piece.
Councilwoman Riley, what's your thoughts on that?
I'm, I'm kind of between the two. I think, you know, typically, most employees get a cost of living increase based upon their, just because of the change in, again, cost of living. And typically, it's been like 1.3 to 1.6, again, pre-COVID. So this is a full-time job, and, and 1% in 2022 is still a year plus beyond, you know, beyond today. So I think I would lean more towards your suggestion opposed to a 0% because, again, it is a full-time job, and in crises, you do, I mean, but again, we need a full assessment of all the jobs and our landscape. It's so many questions, so I really can't say.
All right, so I'm going to mark, I'm going to mark it out on the second, let's do like, and thank you, Councilwoman Riley. So let's do like, just, just throughout there. So I'm going to put Angela out for yes on the 1% increase for four consecutive years.
Those are the only two options?
Well, I didn't hear anything else. That's what I was asking for, other suggestions.
I think our current code speaks to annual cost of living anyway, right?
I'm sorry, say that again?
Doesn't our current code reflect a cost of living increase?
But the current code, oh, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
The, the current code for city council members says that if you do nothing, you get a cost of living increase. It doesn't say that for the mayor right now. In the legislation that I've proposed, that if city council were to fail to act, then the mayor, like city council, would automatically get a cost of living. But right now, it's not there.
And this is Councilwoman Friedman. I just have a clarifying question.
Sure.
So in the case, Ken, what you're saying, in the case that city council fails to act, then it defaults to the cost of living increase, which is 1% per year?
No. What I'm saying is, A, right now, if you fail to act on the mayor's salary, the mayor's salary remains stagnant. There is no automatic cost of living increase. City council, there is an automatic cost of living increase, right? But not for the mayor. So one of the things is to make this line up the same as city council. If you were to do a cost of living increase for each, then it would depend on, each year it would be different.
Right, okay. And in keeping the uncertainty of the economic landscape due to COVID in mind, could it theoretically be possible that if we do approve a cost of living increase that the, the incoming mayor could decide to forego the, the raise like Mayor David did this year and like city council did this year?
Yes.
For next year, okay?
All right, so I'm going back, so we have two, we have two proposals on the board here. So I'm, now I'm up to Councilwoman Friedman. And again, so we got a 0% the first year, 1% of remaining three years, or 1% for four consecutive years. Councilwoman Friedman, again, a straw vote. What's your, what's your thoughts here?
I'm, I likewise to my colleagues am torn. I I think that the spirit of doing this is to have a, a structure in place. Rather, I mean, at least my interpretation of this is that the, the spirit of this discussion is to have a structure in place more so maybe than specifically figuring out or trying to predict the, the economic landscape of next year, if that makes sense. And so therefore, going by that logic, I, I don't know. Maybe I would be leaning toward 1% every year, but I could be convinced otherwise.
Okay, I'm going to put you out for yes, 1% every year. Councilman Strawn, please?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, I, I support 1% each year. I mean, I, I don't, to be honest with you, I don't think the salary is too high to begin with. I'm just being honest with, with my thoughts. When we're talking, as Councilwoman Riley said, we're talking a whole nother year out. We're not even talking about 2021. I remain optimistic that COVID will be done, but I'm not sure at 1% that even COVID necessarily should stop that. In fact, you probably have to work harder and more hours under, under a situation like that. So under those two choices, I would support 1% each year, looking at that it's starting out at 2022.
Thank you, Councilman. Now to Councilman Burns, what's your thought?
Yeah, yeah, Mr. President, I would support the 1% each year because you know, it fell behind our, my friend Mayor Bucci was in for 12 years and I think most of those years he didn't take a raise. And it was a political, you know, not just political thing, but he was doing it for the city, you know, when the city was having problems. And, and it fell behind so that, you know, now we're ahead, you know, 25 years or something like that and it's still behind. So just looking towards the future, you know, 25 years from now, if you want to get somebody that's, wants to run for mayor, you want them, you want that salary to be increasing every year to make it something that people would want to do. So I'm down for the 1%. And I don't think it's
Go ahead. So the 1%
I, I, I agree with Phil. I don't think it's all, all that much. And it is a year out. And the mayor, like the mayor this year can say, you know, if, if, if there is a trouble, the mayor can say, I'm not going to take it, you know, so.
Exactly. All right, then the one, then this is what passes in the straw poll, the 1% for four consecutive years passes in the straw poll. So well, I want, the reason for expedite to be transparent completely, the reason to expedite this, after talking to Ken Frank, he's 100% right. This needs to be done before somebody announces their intent to run for mayor. Then it's completely non-political, this, this conversation and this increase for the mayor. We don't know who's running, therefore, we don't know what, who we're voting for or potentially voting for. So this is the reason expedite is we're voting this so Wednesday can get this behind us. Lee, can you read pending, pending legislation, please?
Yes. First off, we have RL twenty-dash-fifth, 215, adopting the new retention schedule for New York State. Next one is RL twenty-dash-two, eighteen. The agreement with the LDC for economic development. RL twenty-dash-nineteen, or two nineteen, amend the FY46 HUD annual action plan. And RL twenty-dash-two, twenty, funding stores for loans to the Brooklyn County Council churches. RL twenty-dash-two-hundred-and-twenty-one, amend the joint sewer 2020 capital budget for a spare DNF. Lastly, RL twenty-dash-two-hundred-and-twenty-two, bending the joint sewer budget for laboratory supplies.
All right, thank you, Lee. Thank you, everybody, it's been a long two hours. If anybody has anything else we need to talk about right now, please bring it up. Otherwise, I'll take in it. I'll take an amendment to a joint meeting, a motion to a joint meeting.
So moved.
So moved. I'll second.
All right, thank you. Everybody have a good night, thank you.
Good night.
Good day.